Hello, everyone. Thank you for hanging in there with us. We had a little glitch. We wish we could tell you why, but we're all learning in this new age of technology and the interface between Zoom and Facebook. And we thought it was going and it cut us all off, so we all had to restart over. So I want to thank everybody for being patient. We appreciate you guys. So to everybody that is now joining us live, thank you and happy Wednesday. Welcome to Hump Day. We're halfway through the work week for those of us that are working. And for those of us that are not, we really appreciate you guys joining with us during the webinar series to really give you guys some information and help you understand where we're at in the different aspects of the world when it comes to reopening business and reopening small business in our community. So today, we're excited because we have the beautiful ladies of City Council with us. But before we get started, we wanted to share with you guys just a couple of things. First and foremost, we want to thank our sponsors for this particular series, New Mexico Mutual. We appreciate them and their partnership. And we will be talking with them a little bit later on in the webinar series. So stay tuned throughout the month. And we also want to thank our partners at New Mexico Tech, who got us through a little technical difficulties a while ago. So we appreciate them being on with us and for all of your time that you put into this project with us as well. So one of the reasons that we arrived at the webinar series was about eight, six, seven weeks ago. I'm kind of losing track of time these days. We put out a survey and we started to gather information. And of course, everything's fluid because what happened, you know, six weeks ago, two weeks ago, and even yesterday doesn't necessarily matter. But what matters is the information that you, the small business owners, are sending to us so that we know how to create the topics that you need to hear more information about. So you can find that survey, which we are still using and still collecting data and information on, at our website, www.ahtcnm.org. The very top of the page, you're going to see the COVID-19 link. If you just drop that box, it's going to say Resources. There's going to be a Square series, a New Mexico Mutual series. And you can find the survey on there and you can find it also on our front page. And most important, you can find it on our Facebook page pinned to the very top. So hearing from small business owners really helps us. We need you guys to complete these surveys. Five minutes, five questions, and it makes all the difference in the world. So thank you for taking that time. So today, we're excited. We want to hear all about where City Council is and where the city of Albuquerque is when it comes to reopening small business. You know, here at the Albuquerque Espino Chamber, though we have partners all over the country, well, in the world in some cases. And most concentrate of our membership is in the city. So this is an important one for you guys today. So we will play this back. We will also have it on our Facebook page. And you can also find it on the New Mexico Mutual webinar page on our page so that you can play this back if you have to walk away. So we're just going to start at the top upon my screen. So if we could just start by you ladies introducing yourself. And we'll start with Counselor Bassan, if you don't mind.
Hi, thank you for having me. I'm Counselor Brooke Bassan for District Four in Albuquerque, which is the Northeast Heights area.
Counselor Penya? I think you're on mute.
No. Uh oh.
Shay, do you hear her?
No, I don't hear her. Counsel Penya, can you go to the microphone and click up?
You did.
There you are.
Yeah.
There you are.
Okay. You can hear me? Sounds like our morning, how it's been going so far. But anyway, my name again... My name is Clarissa Penya. I'm the City Counselor for District Three. And I represent everything south of Central, west of the river, and in the incorporated areas of the city.
I'm Counselor Borrego, and I have a new guest with me right now. I'm the counselor from District Five, and that was Gischa. She came in loud and clear, I think, crying, wanting to be part of this. So I represent the Northwest Mesa of Albuquerque, closest to Rio Rancho.
Well, thank you, ladies, for joining us today. I made the joke when I walked into the office and said, "It's the ladies of City Council today." So that has a lot of significance. But the most significance that it has is that we are excited to hear from you guys a little bit about the plans when it comes to the city for reopening small business. And throughout this conversation, we're going to have people that are going to be asking questions. So I'll present them to you. But I just want to start by you just giving us whatever information you believe that small businesses need to know. And we'll kind of tackle from there some of the questions. But I'm just going to start up in the corner again. Counselor Bassan, if you can just start, what's important, maybe not just to your district, but to the city as a whole, and most importantly, small business owners right now?
Sure, thank you. So I think that, you know, we need to have a respect and be really cautious and aware and be safe in regards to COVID-19. But I realize, and I've been talking about how it's not the only threat that our city is facing, especially with our small businesses. I think that what I'm really working hard to do is make sure that we can start opening up safely on the small business side so that we can start having our businesses stay around rather than close and have them succeed, have them have their employees to be able to keep the culture that's here in Albuquerque. Because if these businesses go out forever and they don't ever reopen because of this hardship, then it's going to be really, really difficult to preach our culture that we've had here for people to come see. And in addition to that, I think that we need to make sure that the businesses know that it's going to be okay and that, you know, they are going to be able to reopen, hopefully. And we're going to do what we can to get that to happen. So that way, we can do it safely. There's hope. We're going to work hard for them too because that's working hard for all of us on the other end of that. So I think that we got to be safe about it. But I think that a big box store is not necessarily the only fix. People should be able to go into smaller places where there's still the same parameters and protocols with everything so that, you know, if there's only three or four people in a small business buying something, they can socially distance better than if they go into these big box stores. And I think that's a really, really strong statement to be able to help out a little bit more of everybody in Albuquerque.
Thank you, Counselor Bassan. Counselor Penya, the same question. Just get us started with some information, whether it's your district or the city as a whole, and for small business owners. We can't hear you again. What, there? Now unmute.
There.
There we go.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
For whatever reason, it's muting. You know, just to reiterate what Counselor Bassan is saying, you know, for us, we're just waiting for the restrictions to be lifted. We don't have the ability to lift those restrictions. But what we can do is be proactive and ensure that we're trying to work with community leaders, business leaders, to ensure that when they are able to open and it's safe to open, that we can help to support them in terms of what's necessary to make sure that not only their employees are safe, but the public's safe as well. So, you know, I think all of us have talked with different business leaders throughout the community, some of the larger business owners. Just want to ensure because the safety for everyone isn't going to change once the businesses start opening. What we have to do as a responsibility as leaders, community people, business leaders, is to ensure that we do anything we can to make sure that we're taking the necessary precautions to keep everyone safe. You know, the governor's done a good job. We were leading the nation in terms of straightening the curve. But we have to continue that once these restrictions are lifted.
Counselor Borrego, the same question for you, your district and the city as well. What can we tell small business owners?
Well, I think what's important is that, first of all, we have the deadline that the governor gave, which is May 16th. And we are hopeful for that deadline. So I think that's the first thing. Other than that, I am a small business owner myself. And my small business has been closed since March, the beginning of March. My business is in the Village of Los Rancho. And I have not been able to access any of my stuff because it sits in one of the antique malls down there. So, you know, as a small business owner, I mean, I've been lucky that they have waived the fees regarding my rent. So, you know, I think we're going to need to be looking for safe ways, first of all, to open. And second of all, we're going to need to look for opportunities that we can offer to our small business owners that will help them. And that would include, you know, maybe some low-interest loans. We'll be looking to our partners with the banks and the credit unions. We will be looking to see, and I know Counselor Bassan and Counselor Penya, we're looking at, as an opportunity, the city in the future, what we can offer our small businesses to help them. Maybe that would be with hand sanitizer or, you know, masks or, you know, whatever that we can afford. But our city budget is also going to be impacted by all of this with the lack of gross receipts. So we are going to have to have a lot of patience in how we do this and how we move forward.
Well, thank you for that because I think that's something that's really, really important for the public to understand that, you know, the city doesn't have an unlimited cash flow and they don't have a little money-making machine behind the scenes. And so the fact that grocery receipts taxes are impacted, lodgers taxes impacted, all the different ways that the city brings funding in to support the different programs that happen is going to be impacted. So I think that patience is the number one thing we can take away from today's talk and how we can all kind of be working together on that. I want to jump right into a couple of questions. And I'll start with you, Counselor Borrego. What are some examples of other states' non-essentials businesses reopening that you think would work in Albuquerque? Since we have other states that have already opened?
Thank you for asking that question because I just, and I know Counselor Bassan had a bill with Counselor Harris to look at encouraging our businesses to open. And unfortunately, maybe it was a little premature, but maybe she'll look at that again. I think that some of the things that other cities have done, and I had a bill also, which was a memorial. I didn't push it as a resolution because I knew that it wouldn't go over as, you know, it would probably get the support that I wanted. So I created a memorial. And in that bill, we have exhibits that talk about other states. And there's about 20 of them in there of what they've looked at for non-essential businesses. There's an exhibit in there that talks about some of the things that they've done, like creating opportunities for restaurants to open in their parking lots, for example, so that we can have the spacing and use their parking lots to, not just their floor area space. So we're going to have to be looking at our zone code to see where we can be flexible. Other things that we might look at is, and we did this at the railroad yards recently with the farmers markets, where people could just drive up and pick up their produce and stuff like that. So I think that those are the kinds of things that other cities have done. We need to be very careful in terms of, you know, the social distancing and wearing masks and not spreading the virus because, let's face it, there are places in New Mexico that are still, you know, like Farmington up by, at the Navajo Nation and Gallup, that we had to close this last weekend where things are still not good. And when I go out shopping, I see people not wearing masks. And, you know, it really concerns me. This morning, I went to the bank and there were people standing in line waiting to get into the bank not wearing masks. So I think people need to take this very serious.
Well, thank you for that. And I think that one thing that it sounds like is creativity right now is another point. You know, what type of business or industry are you in? And what are the creative ways that people are looking to be able to stay within the guidelines, but also reopen? So I think, you know, any businesses that are out there, if you guys are watching or listening and you have a creative way, comment on that, whether it's in Facebook or on Zoom. And we'll keep track of all that information because it's about best practices right now. It's about what are other places doing and what are some businesses doing that have been creative to keep themselves open, their employees employed, and a little bit of the economy going?
Can I just offer that maybe some of your viewers today might want to pull up M20-2 and take a look at the exhibits particularly in that bill?
Okay, I'm going to type that in now and we will get that together. So I want to jump over to Counselor Penya. Do you still plan on presenting the equipment distribution idea as a resolution instead of a memorial? Because I know that you've been doing some work on that.
Yeah, so actually, I had a resolution. I don't have the number off the top of my head. But the resolution was talking to some of the business leaders. And Counselor Bassan was joining me on that is that talking to some of the business leaders, and especially the ones that have larger businesses, want to ensure our success. You know, as everyone talks about now, we're all in this together, right? So they want to ensure everyone's success. And as you stated earlier, with the city and the resources that they have, business leaders have come to us and said, "Hey, you know, we're willing to join in on this and see if we can create," for the lack of a better word. Counselor Bassan said she was going to think of a better word for it, but kind of creating care packages for really small businesses because, for example, some businesses, since this started, started buying hand sanitizer in large volumes and gloves and some of the necessary items to reopen. Unfortunately, the smaller businesses haven't had that opportunity. And now that they're looking at reopening, you know, the availability of these items is very scarce. So coming together with the city and businesses to see if we can help to support and promote small businesses in the reopening and to promote safety overall.
Okay, great, thank you. And we're going to come back to that because that is a really hot topic right now with business owners asking many questions. And I'll throw this out, food for thought, and we can talk about it throughout the next little bit. But, you know, the questions are, you know, who's going to be required? Is it patrons? Is it the employees? And the next question that comes in is, are they going to pay for all of this because they've been closed all this time? So there's a lot of stuff out there that people are asking about. And so we just want to throw that out there. But while we're throwing that, like we like to say here at the chamber, spaghetti on the wall for everybody to think about. I want to move over to Counselor Bassan. I want to ask you another question. What can you tell small business members who constantly ask about why they can't control the number of customers in their small stores while it seems like the public perception is big box stores can and they don't always? So this is a hard line for small business owners, and they're trying to do their best. Lots of questions around that.
Well, so first is, I agree. I mean, I completely agree with that. And that's a big thing that I'm fighting for right now. And I think that that's exactly the point is that these big stores are allowing 300 people in them. But once you're in, there's not any, always, there's not always that separation of six feet. There's, you know, I was at one of them. I needed to get a long list of stuff that was starting to build up for my house. And I was wearing my mask. I was going in with my list and working hard to get in and get out. But half the stores seemed like they were in the swamp cooler aisle, you know? And I think that that's kind of exactly the point that I'm trying to make and trying to fight for and that I'm starting to work with these other wonderful counselors on is small businesses, in my opinion and in a lot of other opinions, you know, can open up with the same 10%, 20% capacity. And that's still way less than 300 people. And it is arguable. I think it's a very valid point that these people, the business owners, absolutely are able to protect people more and keep them properly socially distanced more. I'm a firm believer that these businesses can keep us safer by reopening. And I also don't know how I feel about curbside pickup for a lot of them. When we're allowed in grocery stores, we're allowed in Target and Costco and Lowe's and Home Depot and Walmart. And there's not just curbside pickup there. Again, I think it's safer to be able to say four to seven to nine people can go in and they can wear masks, gloves. And I think that that's really important to fight for right now and to be able to advocate because I think that that's going to help keep us safer while also not hurting our economy and these wonderful businesses that we have. And I just want to add one of the questions you asked earlier on what we can do. And I think the big point that I really want to also drive home is we are asking for a plan. That's what my resolution with Counselor Harris is, is saying, "Give us a plan." And we're not saying that anything has to be finite because, as all of us know, everything's changing. Everything is, you know, flexing. Every day, we run into a different obstacle or have to go in a totally different direction. But if we can start with a plan, then that gives our small business owners and our community something to start knowing this might be where we go if this happens. And if that happens, then we might go in that direction. So that way, I mean, everybody always does better when you have some sort of expectation. And again, it doesn't have to be a guarantee because we all know that right now there are no guarantees. But this is something that if we can give an expectation, I think that's going to bring some comfort. And I think that that's going to bring some more capability so that when things do start opening up safely, it will be better and it will be more feasible for longevity.
So that brings up a really good point. And this is going to be a question for all you ladies. We'll start with Brooke since we kind of just barely touched on it. So I know that it takes a lot of collaborative effort to come up with a plan. And it's not a one-size-fits-all. We get it. Different industries, different areas in need of more than others. But do you, does the city have a plan? Is there any bullet points that you guys can share with us for small businesses of some key points that we need to make sure? Even if we're repeating them, how can we keep hammering them to keep everybody understanding how important this is?
Well, so I think personally, I believe it's coming down from the governor. I know that our mayor is talking regularly with the governor. And I realize that we do, I've never once in any way asked for our mayor to express home rule and go totally on his own with this. I think that we need to follow the governor's guidelines. But it would be nice to have a plan. And I personally haven't seen any plan other than what is being issued on any kind of regular press release for the public. So I think that that is what I'm asking for. That's what I'm hoping that we can get. And again, it's not, it doesn't have to be perfect. But just let's start with some kind of baby steps, right? You've got to start with one small step to take the next step. And, you know, I think that it's really incredibly important that we are able to take the directives from the top down in a lot of circumstances, but while maintaining that equity and fairness. And I do think that some small businesses that I've talked to feel that they're being discriminated against. And I think that that discrimination is a very valid point. So, you know, I mean, I think, and, you know, I think that it's very important that if anybody's being discriminated against, whether it's from race or for business or for any kind of anything, that's just wrong. That's not how we treat people. So I think it's fair to say, you know, let the city know that. Call 311. Let's make sure that all sides are being heard because we know we need to be safe. We know we need to keep people protected. And that is our number one priority, I think, for everybody involved. But that form of protection also needs to take into account all the different threats that we're facing as a community.
Sure. So Counselor Penya, can you expand a little bit on that and tell us what you are, you guys are, you know, boots on the ground. You're out there every day. You're taking the calls. You're hearing from the public. So just expand on that a little bit for us.
Really, I think Counselor Bassan said it very well. You know, just the governor is the one who is going to ease some of the restrictions. We're going to wait for her to ease those restrictions. We don't necessarily have that ability at City Council. But what we can do is exactly what she said, is be proactive and try to help to support these businesses so that they know what to do, when to do it, and how to do it, and to ensure that they do it right and that they do it safely again, you know? And so that's why I think that, you know, just trying to partner with everyone, City Council, the mayor's office, trying to partner with everyone to provide kind of these care packages is one thing that we can do. And when you're talking about the guidelines, I mean, those are going to be so extensive. As you know, every industry is different. And they're going to have to follow the CDC, the federal guidelines, all these guidelines that we don't have any say over. You know, so those are things that people, small businesses, are going to have to do. But where we can help, we will help.
Great. And before we move on, Counselor Borrego, anything you'd like to add to that as well?
Yeah, I think, you know, I don't, I think COVID came on to our community so quickly that people responded to what we had to respond to, which was the public health issue. So I have a little disagreement in terms of people being discriminated against. I don't think that was the intent in any way, shape, or form. I think that there was just a reaction to it. And we, you know, I think the governor tried to do the best job she could in terms of, you know, making sure that the virus didn't spread. And I think that now that, you know, as we move forward, we want to be certain. And I'm sure that, you know, in the minds of the people, the mayor and the governor, they're having to look at, you know, opening these restrictions or loosening the restrictions so that all, everybody can benefit. Because surely, this is not a Democratic-Republican thing. It is a small business issue. And Democrats and Republicans own businesses. So when we move forward, we want to move forward in a way that's safe, that promotes, you know, sort of a community healing, I guess you could say, that also gives us a way that we can make sure that that curve is flat and that it has been flat for a while. I think that the big businesses, you know, they have benefited to a point, yes. But, you know, I don't think we knew what we were dealing with. And somewhat, we still don't know what this virus is. We don't even have a pathway for the vaccination. So opening the businesses, I think, hopefully, that May 16th is a good date. I think that what I did with M2 gives us a little bit of idea of how we can look at those land uses. Because remember, being a planner, there's a lot of land uses. So a nail salon is very different from a massage parlor salon or, you know, other types of businesses where you have one-on-one contact. So we have to be very, very strategic about how each of these phases help to open businesses. And I think that's the first thing that we should probably look at is what businesses are essential and how do we phase those in? So there's going to have to be some phasing done in there.
So we have, we have several questions that have come in. So I'm just going to kind of go around again. And if anybody has anything to add after we ask, please do. But I'm just going to go right back to Counselor Bassan. And the the next question that came in, and I think, again, in reading the question before I read it to you, I think it's important that the public understands that, you know, the governor is literally the commander in chief of our state right now. And she really is the one, and her team is the one that will will set these phases, these rules, these precedences. And I know that we're looking for plans, and I know we're looking to City Council. But we need to look to them for guidance right now because there's a lot of things that are out of their control. But I I'll rephrase the question a little bit, which is basically, what happens if the curve does not improve in, say, like, the next 30 days? Because, you know, we're still, we still get cases every day in New Mexico. We're not some of those other states where, you know, we haven't had a case in 10 days. And so the question is, how willing do you think that she would be, or in your opinion, to go ahead and pull the trigger and let businesses open and let them self-police? And this is coming from a small business owner who's aching financially to reopen the business. So I'm going to start with Counselor Bassan.
Yes, so I think that I can only I can only empathize with with all of that. That I'm hoping that the governor will see that, again, like, the longer we go, the larger the hardship. But as far as the curve, I think that it's important in when we hear the statistics that there's, you know, more cases or that that the curve is not flattening like what we we are hoping or as, you know, it's declining as as fast as we want. We also have to make sure that everyone realizes that they're testing more people every day, too. Our capabilities of testing are increasing. And I think that that makes a big difference because it makes sense. If you test more people, you're going to probably probably get more results, right? That's, I mean, it's simple math with that. So I think, and I hope that she is going to make sure to take that into consideration, too, and make sure to treat it with a ratio rather than just, okay, well, the the hard numbers are listed here. So that way, if we can see, you know, kind of comparing apples to apples. If you tested 100 people a day six weeks ago, and now we're testing 10,000 people a day, you know, we need to be able to say why that that is decreasing in the way it is. And, you know, I think that there's something to be said. I want to mention that there's a couple other states I've heard. I've heard that Texas and California are both, they're allowing certain non-essential businesses to fill out an application, for a lack of a better term, to be evaluated by the administration. And to be evaluated to say, okay, if this non-essential is following and offering their protocols and what they are doing to keep people safe, then, you know, the mayor or the governor or or whatever task force may be set up, they could almost apply to be deemed essential so that they can open. And I think that that's something we could consider. And I really believe that small businesses would be willing to do something like that. These aching businesses are going to say, we'll do what it takes. We don't want to be harmful. We don't want to be harmed. But we also have to be able to consider consider opening our our doors, too, so that we can survive this in a different fashion.
So the next question I want to present to Counselor Penya, because a lot of people are asking. And again, I'm going to kind of tweak several questions and put them into one. But the question, the first question is, you know, how solid do we feel about the May 15th, 16th date? But that led into the next question, which is, if that date does not come because of the curve or what what reasons that date is going to be extended? How do you feel? What is your stance on giving more notice than a day to businesses? Because at this past one, businesses are upset. They didn't have enough time. They had rehired. They had purchased products. They were getting ready to open. And they found out not in enough time that they weren't going to be able to open. So this is a pretty hot topic right now. So I just want to hear what your stance is on that. And how how could we help direct the governor and the task force to let them know they need time? If if they're not going to open, you know, businesses need more than a day to prepare for not opening.
Well, that was a lot of questions, I think. But I think it was kind of similar to what you were asking, Counselor Bassan, is that, you know, if the curve doesn't flatten, then what? Then I think the governor's been very clear that it's, you know, it's not, she's not just deciding to not open business and when to open. I think she's she's really telling everyone, it's, again, that it's a personal responsibility on all of our part to do all the right things when we're out, to wear masks, to wash our hands, to stay six feet apart, to make sure that the small businesses have the necessary items to be able to open safely. So I think, again, you know, I just really want to say, I don't want to put it back on everyone. But it's a personal responsibility. Like I said, when we first started this meeting, it's not going to be safer to be out just because we've been isolating for for two months. It's actually going to be something that our success is going to be dependent on the people and the residents of the city of Albuquerque and our businesses.
And do you feel pretty strongly, I think the the second part to that was, do you feel pretty strongly that having more than a day's notice or a two day notice for the businesses? I think what they're probably looking for, from what I can tell, is maybe just some support in that area. Because I I know that there's businesses that are saying they purchased product or rehired. Then the date got moved back another two weeks. And so that's some of the reach out right now.
Yeah, as a council, I mean, I'm sure we can have some dialogue with the governor's office and ask them to do that. But we're not part of the decision making process in terms of whether it's a day or a week. You know, it's unfortunate. This is an unprecedented time for us. So, you know, I I would assume that the governor is doing these things for a reason. And yeah, I would agree, we would need more time. But it it's just, it's not as simple as that right now.
And I think that's why this conversation is important for especially the Albuquerque community to understand that, you know, we're limited, the City Council is limited as to what they can do, the mayor is limited. And so these are these are important conversations because I think sometimes not everybody understands the process. And so we are, we are working through that to help them understand.
And then can I say something on that, too? I just, I think that echoing a lot of what Counselor Penya said, I think this is where we say, and and I'm calling, make a plan to the mayor, to the governor, make a plan. So there's the phase one, phase two, phase three of what the expectation is kind of on a on a larger scale. But it would be really lovely if if you could, you know, how we could have bullet points for if phase one happens, then small businesses can count on this. Again, it's not locking anything and setting it in stone. As we know, the dates could be pushed. But that way, the the community and these businesses can say, okay, it's looking like May 16th, and we'll be, you know, in this phase. And if it happens, we need to be prepared for. And then to be able to say, okay, well, maybe we will hear about it getting pushed back. And hopefully it will give them some more time. But again, if we have a plan, that's great. That's something.
So I think that with that being said, the next question is going to be really hard since we don't really have that Plan A, the the question that came in. And again, if there's any comments on it, but I'll I'll go ahead and say it. You know, is there a Plan B? If if we have an outbreak, what happens then? You know, does it, has anybody heard what that might look like in the future? Would we re shut down? Those types of questions. So I'll put that out on the table.
I think that's a question for the federal government. But I'll let Counselor Borrego speak on this. But I just want to say that, you know, I think that's why with the with the memorial that Counselor Borrego passed, with myself and Counselor Bassan and and Counselor Harris, and obviously with the support of the rest of the council, we just really want to do what we can to ensure that when they open, we partner together with organizations like yours and other businesses to at least, if they get a day's notice, to say, hey, at least we've provided them with gloves and masks and thermometers, if that's going to be the case. And, you know, I I would just do a call out to asking businesses to coordinate. Maybe we do it via the Hispano Chamber to coordinate and see if you guys can get these items donated. See what we can do from the city of Albuquerque. We can create these items and maybe limit up to, obviously, there's not enough resources to go around, but to limit it to really small businesses, maybe five employees or less that don't have these items available to them, and we can get them to them. And, you know, I think we're all ready to, you know, roll up our sleeves and get that done.
So I'm glad that you brought that up because actually, one of the questions that we have here at the Albuquerque Hispano Chamber is, what what role do you see for for all the ladies? What role do you see us playing as the Albuquerque Hispano Chamber? And we do have a large reach out with well over 1,000 members, but also the community in general. What do you see our role is and how can we partner with you guys and help? Not, I I love the idea of the masks and all that, but what else? Because that's something we need to do, and we would love to partner to do that. But where else do you see us fitting into the puzzle?
Can I suggest some ideas? I I think, and I think this is kind of what Counselor Penya is talking about, is we need to talk about public-private partnerships and how those, you know, how those look in the future. Because we are used to doing that quite a bit, especially the city with groups like, you know, Netflix and offering incentives. So I think we're going to be looking at a lot of public private partnerships with financial institutions, with small businesses, with the chambers, you know, to to encourage not only education, because businesses are going to have to start looking, relooking at how they do business. So their business model may change. They may be doing more e-commerce. They may be doing more, you know, there's, just this morning, I was thinking about my business being closed for two months. And I'm thinking, well, maybe I need to get on the internet and start putting some of my inventory, you know, and and promoting it in a different way, like on eBay or, you know, Facebook. I know there's a place on Facebook where they sell stuff. And just start looking at a completely different model of how I actually do business. And I think those are some things that, you know, not, we're thinking of actually going to a physical place. And maybe, you know, that's going to change. We're going to have more people working from home. Obviously, we already have that now. So just looking at a completely different way of what is the new normal for doing business.
I I agree for sure. It's a whole new way. I know everybody keeps saying, don't use that term anymore, the new normal. But it really is a different normal than it was two months ago, and it makes it new. And it's, it is a new way. Counselor Bassan, for you, the same question. What role do you see us here at the Chamber playing as part of the plan and the community?
You know, I think that I obviously I agree with Counselor Borrego, too. And then I think one step further, too, that we can, if you can help spread the word. You know, we get a lot of emails from constituents, and we get a lot of emails. And I'm sure, I'm sure the mayor and the administration does, too. So I think that it's really important that there's a balance to all the emails we get. And we get a lot of emails from people saying they want to, they want us to stay shut and they want to be safe. And I agree to a certain degree with with a lot of that. However, I think that it's important that if businesses have, I've gotten one recently that I really was appreciative of from a small business saying, these are the the parameters that we have developed and what we plan to use when we are allowed to be open. Please take a look at them. Let us know if there's something else. So that way, we can, we can be advocating as the small business, saying, we're willing to do the work. Just give us the opportunity when you deem fit. So if they email, if they, you know, contact the administration, I think that a proactive approach is going to be really strong for our community, saying, we're willing to cooperate and listen to the rules. But as soon as you open us up, we're also going to continue that behavior and let us show you how. I think that that way, we can all have a little bit of comfort coming from both directions rather than some extreme unknown. We can have some kind of expectation that will hopefully help make us all feel a little bit safer on a whole other level.
So I definitely want to make a statement because it brought up something else that's come up quite a bit in the last at least four to six weeks. Is, you know, small business owners are going through a lot right now. But one of the things that they're actually going through, and we don't think about very much, is the overwhelming amount of emails that are being hit to them. You know, it's it's all of the resource organizations out there trying to give them as much information as possible. And it gets so overwhelming and so confusing. So I want to say that the city has a fantastic website to go to to get a lot of those resources. And of course, the Chamber has the COVID-19 page. I think what's important is we've cut back on the amount of emails that we've put out. We are enjoying partnering with other organizations and trying to just keep everything on the resource page and saying, hey, don't forget, if you need us, go to this website because it is overwhelming. And that's something else they're going through is pretty much, you know, disseminating all the information that's just being thrown at them. And so I think what you said is really important, that, you know, the ones that do reach out to those specific emails, be patient. We will get back with you, we promise. But please remember to visit the city, the state, and the Chamber webpages. We have all the resources listed there and and so do all the other organizations as well. So Counselor Penya, again, I I know that we have talked about doing some stuff with the Chamber. But is there any other role that you see that the Chamber has during this time during COVID and before we and how we help get businesses to reopen?
Well, the Chamber is always helpful just in terms of marketing and helping get the word out. And obviously, you have the information on your website. You've always been a great partner with the city of Albuquerque. So I'm sure we're going to, you know, continue in in that fashion with how we support, you know, not just the business community, but our our residents. And then, again, just to say this initiative, you know, I think it would be great if the Hispano would take the lead on it and partner with, you know, let you guys take the bull by the horns, if you will, and see if we can get this done and and work with the small businesses to get some of those items to them. I think that would be paramount because if they give us notice that it's going to happen next week, that it's going to open on the 16th, we'll we'll be prepared. And if they're told on the 15th that we're going to open on 16th, we'll be prepared.
You got it. I I hope so. We we agree. So before we leave, ladies, I just want to say, you know, maybe we could just start with Counselor Borrego. What is it that you want to leave the small business owners and the community with today? Because we know today is not tomorrow, and that could change. But what are some words that you'd like to leave with them today over the future? And how important small businesses to what we do?
Well, I think small business is the cornerstone to Albuquerque. And obviously, I'm a small business owner, and I have been for, since I retired from the city, which was in 2011. And I grew up in business, and my grandfather's owned businesses. And so, you know, it's it's definitely something that our community is looking at. And I think what I'd like to leave small business owners with is that they have resources with the chambers. The financial institutions are looking because they have received federal money to loan. And the other thing is, to a small business owner, asking them maybe to relook at some of the ways that they do business and to be maybe a little more diversified, to have, maybe make their business be a little more mobile. And I think we're going to have to look at our permitting. We're going to have to look to the state when they offer business licenses or when we obtain our business licenses, how we write our business, you know, what what exactly what it is we're doing. Because there's going to be some room for interpretation in there. And, you know, we're going to have to be flexible, and and that includes our zoning code. So that's, those are really important. And I look to the Chamber, especially the Hispano and other chambers, to give us some direction and some guidance as well. So I thank you for having us on today.
Thank you. Counselor Penya, anything you'd like to add to the community and your constituents for small businesses and where we're at today?
I just want to say, pre-pre-COVID, you know, Albuquerque, I think, was on an upward trend. We were doing some really, really great things. And I think we have the potential to continue on that trend of an upward upward excitement in terms of lots of the development that was happening, businesses that were happening in my district in particular, you know, with the opening of the defined fitness and other businesses in the area. So I think that it's going to be a little bit of a hurdle. But I think together, we can get back to where we were really soon and make sure that we're prosperous here in the city of Albuquerque.
Great. Thank you. Counselor Bassan, some question?
Thank you. So I come from a family of small business owners. There are two local small businesses here in Albuquerque, and they are they are hurting as well. So again, I can empathize, not just sympathize with the situation. And I think that it's really important to know that I'm I'm willing to fight. And this isn't especially especially for everybody on all ends of the spectrum. This is not us or me saying that business is more important over over physical health and safety. This is about recognizing that physical health and safety and the threat from COVID is affecting and threatening so many different aspects. So we have to find a way to balance out our physical safety with also the needs of these businesses and their generations, some of them, that they've been around. And, you know, this is how they feed their families. This is how people do survive or employ. That's their passion. So I think that it's really important to know that this is about being safe in a whole other spectrum and on a multitude of levels. So I think that, you know, we have to make sure to know that I'm rooting for you, and I'm going to do everything I can to to help open up safely as soon as possible with recognizing all of that.
Well, thank you for that, and we appreciate that. I think it's real important that small business owners know that, that no matter what, you know, we're all on their side. And, you know, we're finding the balance as well. So before we leave, I always like to do something a little fun because, you know, I I think sometimes people forget that that you guys are out there with your families and you're living this in your personal lives as well. It's not just through the City Council in general. And so I'd love to hear from you guys. What are you doing to keep your sanity and de-stress? Because just like everybody else, kids at home, working from home, husband and wife, working in the same space, sharing computers, all that fun stuff. So I'd love to hear from you guys, what is a great way to de-stress that we could share with the with the public?
Who's going first? I'll go first. So yesterday, I decided to work on pruning a tree, and I realized I'm way in over my head. I'm, it's it's a giant mess out there, but I, we're home, and we're not engaging with other people. And I hope that this tree will look better than it did and and will still exist by the time I'm done with it.
Sounds like YouTube video time for sure. Congratulations. I'm taking a sleep of faith. Counselor Penya?
You know, there's just so much. I have a really large family, so it's been a little tough, just like everyone else out there. You know, we we had a wedding that we were going to have, we had two weddings. We had, my daughter's getting her master's, my grandson's confirmation. So it's been a stressful time like it has been for everyone, everyone out there. But, you know, we're really finding a lot of things to to do around the house, like pruning the, like pruning trees, as Counselor Bassan said. But one thing that I've been finding myself doing is that I've been wanting to paint my front door for a long my front door for a long time a different color, and I painted it, didn't like the color, so I painted it again, so who knows if it'll be a third times the chart.
And that's one of those great stories, if only the walls could talk. How many colors has this been? I love that. Lots of improvement happening. Counselor Borrego, what are you doing to de-stress something fun in this time?
Well, I think in the morning, I get up first thing and I meditate. So I, and it doesn't matter if it's a minute or 10 minutes, I try to do that every day. And that has been very, very helpful. So, and there's a lot of programs on YouTube that help you do that, so it's not like you can't do it. The other thing I've been doing quite a bit is cooking, which is, you know, I'm trying to get into an exercise routine, and that's been a little tough, because like, you know, I see that I need to make some brownies, or I need to make, so, yeah, I think we have to be a little careful, try to eat healthier in this time.
You know, we've been running around hearing everybody talk about the quarantine 15, so that's been the big thing all over, we've been reading it, and everybody, you know, running around going, ah, the quarantine 15. So I agree. But thank you, ladies, so much. I think we've learned a lot today, and I really want to close up with some important bullet points, and I think the public might be able to jot this down and really kind of read through it, and understand that we're all in this together, and I understand that everybody has a different situation, but in the end, it's the whole community, the whole nation that's being affected, the whole world, if you think about it. So one of the things that we talked about today was patience, having patience and understanding that that's hard for some of us who are go-go-go and don't have that patience, we got to practice that. Being creative, being creative in your workspace, what can you do maybe to sustain your business during this time, something you would have never thought about before, whether it's going virtual, or curbside pickups, different things like that. Educate yourself. Something that I believe Counselor Basson mentioned was, educate yourself, read, get online, learn a little bit about what it really is, what is the disease, what is it affecting? You know, learn about all the different statistics and analytics that they're throwing out there, I think that's important. Safety, we have to practice safety, that's super important. Even when we reopen, we're still going to be out there and about, so what can we do to be safe? Practice that. Have a plan, have a plan, because we don't know what's happening tomorrow. It's okay to have a plan in pencil, so that you can erase and mark out, because we know that things are going to change. Be proactive, be proactive and be heard. If you guys have questions, concerns, email, call, send messages to the council, send messages to us, we'll do our best to get those messages and questions addressed. But I think it's important that we don't just sit back and do nothing, that we sit back and support each other, and we do our very best to get our economy back up and moving, and get our small businesses open. So we just want to say thank you again to our partners at New Mexico Mutual, we appreciate you supporting small business during this time, and we want to thank our friends at New Mexico Tech, and most importantly, we want to thank the ladies of city council for joining us today, it's been a real treat. And what I want to do is, I'm going to turn off the Facebook Live feed, and I'm going to ask the ladies to stick around for just a minute. So I want to say goodbye to all of our Facebook fans, and we'll see you guys for